Let's pray. My Father, I sure want to thank you and praise you for your mercy to us and thank you for your great goodness, your loving kindness. Lord, thank you for forgiveness. And Lord, I thank you for this fine assembly here. And Lord Jesus, we recognize that you're the one that has the wisdom that we need. You're the one that has the discernment. And Lord, we ask you to, would you grant these leaders and workers and servants, God, would you grant us your wisdom and your discernment? And Lord, we just want to commit this to you, that you would rule and dominate in every decision. Lord, that ultimately, that you'd get all the glory and all the praise for what we're doing here tonight and in the days ahead. No doubt, there's folks in here that have burdens and that are heavy on their hearts and that can't even be mentioned publicly. I pray that you'd hedge about each family represented here, each marriage represented here. I pray that you'd guard them from evil. And I pray that you'd bless these folks, Lord, in a special way, Lord, and their families as well. And Lord, we want to give you a good return on your investment. Thank you for this county. Thank you for blessing our country. Thank you for the veterans that, as we recognized yesterday in Veterans Day. And Lord, you made all that possible. Thank you for the freedoms that we have to assemble like this and do your work and your business. Blessed now like only you can, I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ilum.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Schneider.
Here.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have a public presentation presented by MODOT concerning the Blanchett Bridge.
Good evening, the councilmembers. Thank you for having us. My name is Andy Turk. For some of these that I have met, I have met a few of you. I'm the area engineer for St. Charles County for MODOT. Chris Kelly is our project manager for the Blanchett Boone, Blanchett Boone, I've got Boone on the mind, Blanchett Bridge project. And Rachel Suddith is our communications specialist. So I've got a, so thank you for fitting us in here. Just kind of want to get the word out about some impacts affecting the county next year. So I've got some slides here. So this project is slated for 2020 and 2021. So as you can see, and you're probably thinking deja vu, right? So this just seems like just a couple of years ago, we were doing westbound bridge, right? So now it's time for eastbound. It's a little bit different scope, but we'll get into that. So obviously, the bridge closest to us, and I like to include that bridge picture because it just shows you how much actual bridges out there. Most of the people think of a trust bridge, trust being the whole thing, but there's so much more than the trust. Of the actual 16 spans, only three of them is the actual trust. Just some quick history for those who don't know. So the original bridge that was, carried both directions of traffic, I think it was open in '58, let's see, '58, something like that. So the eastbound bridge was added in '78 to give those opposing lanes their, its own bridge. It had a major rehab, but about 25 years later, did joint replacements, did a paint overcoat and some minor repairs. So that, it's five lanes wide. It's around 75,000, 77,000 cars every day, cars and trucks every day, just taking a beating out there. So just some upcoming maintenance work that's going to be needed is the major thing is the full paint replacement. So if I think about trying to relay this is if you get new shingles on the house or you need new shingles, sometimes you can overlay one layer of shingles over the top. Well, that's what they did, you know, 15, 20 years ago, they put a layer of paint on it. So now, when you get to layer three, you've got to go down to the bare steel. So just like with the shingles, you've got to take everything off in order to go with your new set of shingles. So that's a major component of what our contractor will be doing next year, the next two years. Also, just the replacement of the expansion joints, the expanding contractors, I don't know how many expansion joints there are offhand, but there's a lot of it, yeah, quite a few. And those things just get, take a pounding every day from large trucks, and they're ready for replacement. And then there'll be some structural repairs and then overall deck repairs. And then an epoxy polymer overlay just kind of prolongs the life of the deck, keeps salt and water from intruding and corroding the steel. So just anticipating some questions of what did we do seven years ago? Why aren't we doing, you know, what did we do last time? Why didn't we do it then? So basically, the components that we're updating weren't really at the end of their useful life yet. So again, back to the roof analogy, if you had a 20-year roof, you're not going to replace it at year 12 or something like that. And really, the eastbound bridge was used for handling a traffic whenever the westbound was down. So something very similar will happen next year where we'll actually utilize the westbound bridge to make room on the eastbound bridge for the rehab work. The other major thing that kind of triggered this timing was, you guys may have recently heard about the 270 North Design Build Project that was just awarded by our commission last week. So that project is expected to start up next year with more of their major impacts being in '21, '22, and '23. So this project originally was slated to be taking off and be the heaviest impacts in 2021. So regionally, we thought that was a better idea to accelerate. So we actually accelerated this project about nine months ago. So we've been scrambling ever since to try and make this a better fit for the region so that you're not running into one major impact and then another at the same time, in the same season, if you will. So that's the other major thing that triggered this timing. And just, it's just on its regular maintenance cycle. I'll just go with my pretty designed picture I've drawn here. So basically, this is a photo of I-70 in St. Charles. We're looking east into St. Louis County. The orange line, so basically, we maintain four lanes in the eastbound direction. Two, you can see, cross over the median. We'll utilize the existing crossovers that were left over from six, seven years ago. So two lanes would cross over and utilize the westbound bridge. And the westbound bridge is, the westbound direction is signified in green there. And those two lanes, those two directions would be separated by a temporary concrete barrier. And then two lanes would remain across the eastbound structure. And then that work zone, I've kind of drawn it in a red shaded area, that will move around as the contractor progresses. But this is just maybe the first stage of work where it shows two lanes on the, two eastbound lanes on the westbound structure and then two on the eastbound. You can see, I'll call it lane four, is a dedicated on-ramp, on-ramp from Fifth Street, if that makes sense. So maintaining four lanes eastbound during peak time, maintaining three lanes westbound, we can only maintain three lanes westbound because of the, that bridge is just a little bit more narrow than the eastbound structure. So in order to really fit in a lot of work next year in 2020 for the contractor to get, make sure they get all that painting on that trust done, we've potentially set up for them to be able to shut down, I'll call it lanes three and four, the ones on the right side of the screen there, during nighttime hours, whenever they need it. We don't anticipate a lot. We don't know quite yet until the contractor's on board and they can kind of give us their plan. But we've made that scenario available so that they can get in, knock this thing out, do most of the headache in one season, and then we have a milestone in there by November. I've got some more slides here. So schedule, got it ahead of myself. So this will get bid in December and then hopefully, we'll get some great bids and then it'll be awarded by our commission in January. We have a notice of receipt for the contractor in March, so that will be the first time that they could get out there and start. So it all kind of depends on the weather and stuff, too. So I don't, we don't expect impacts right away, but I would expect sometime in the spring, we'd be looking at that scenario there. And then we've got milestone to where before Thanksgiving of 2020, those directions of traffic will be back on their respective bridges, if that makes sense. Because we don't want, we don't want the contractor to try and winterize this type of operation, you know? So, and then, so that's 2020. 2021, westbound will be completely unaffected, so westbound will be back where it was. And then eastbound, we'll allow up to one lane closed during peak times. So still maintain those four lanes, but as far as, Chris, if you don't mind, speak to the bidding, the A-plus B.
Yeah, for 2021, the contractor will bid the number of days they need a lane closure on eastbound 70. So we're allowing them to bid up to a maximum of 90, but every day costs them money to incentivize them to limit that. And, you know, our hope is really that they would bid possibly as little as zero days of land closure in '21. But we won't know that, of course, until the bids come in. Potentially up to 90 days with a lane closed around the clock, but we're hoping for as little as possible.
How many contractors would bid on a job like this?
We would expect to see multiple. This will get interest from contractors around the region. So you'll get contractors that work all over the Midwest, not just local firms.
Yeah.
Mr. Cronin?
My district's affected by this a lot because I go 70 for Mid Rivers all the way out to Forest Hill. So I would imagine you're going to put signs up on 70, like by Wentzville, and say, "Construction on 70, please consider using 64," or "St. Peter's Construction on 70, please use, consider using 370."
Yes.
You can have all that.
It's got some regional stuff we can speak to here in just a second here. So just kind of a closer look at 70 and Fifth Street. The ramp on the left there, with I got the red X's there, that would be through the year 20, during the year 2020 construction season, that one would have to be closed because there's no way to really safely allow them to go merge into the crossover. So those folks would be detoured down to Fifth Street. And then the other red X's will show you the potential nighttime closures. So we'd allow 9:00 PM on a week night and then 10:00 PM on a weekend night so that they could get in there, get a bunch of work done, have the entire bridge in case they need to pour a joint or move some material or something like that. So it's a lot of work for them to put, install that closure, so I don't, we don't expect that to be a mainstay, but it definitely is a possibility, so I wanted to make sure that folks are aware.
Will you be adjusting this, like gateway green light? That's one of the things that Mr. Greif said gives you ability to adjust that. Will you be able to use gateway green light to adjust this stuff so it's flow traffic so it's impacted a minimal amount?
Yes. In fact, we actually, Chris put in a requirement that they bring on their own professionally licensed traffic engineer that will do just that, sequence the lights and, you know, they could, I'm not a traffic guy, so I, you know, push people through and, you know, optimize the signals for heavier diversion and flows and that kind of stuff, so. So working with the city of St. Charles, there will potentially be, or there will be some short-term closures of South Fifth underneath, what did I say? South Main, sorry, sorry. South Main under Blanchett Bridge, because you can see right there in the red square, there's the joint there to be demoed out and replaced. So there will be some impacts there. It won't be near, it won't be months long or anything like that, like with the westbound, because they were actually rebuilding the whole trust. This is just a, we'll be cutting it out, installing the new joint, and then pouring it back. And then, of course, Katy Trail goes right through our work zone. So whenever they're affected, they actually, we do allow up to a 15-minute closure of the Katy Trail. If there's going to be longer than a 15-minute, if the contractor anticipates a certain day they need a longer than 15 minutes, they will set up a on-street detour for the folks in Katy Trail. We're coordinating with Department of Natural Resources on that. So regionally, just kind of shows you where we're at in the region here, in the black circle. And the red is showing 370, where we'll have large, I'll call it diversion signs, where we'll have heads-up signs near 270 and 364, encouraging folks to divert their route around this impact. And then same thing with 64 and 70, just kind of trying to catch these people while they're heading in. And we have a lot of use of those big electronic dynamic message signs that we can utilize for that kind of thing, so. And then addition, on the yellow route in 364, so as you remember, first time we worked on Blanchett a couple of years ago, Phase Three of Page wasn't even open yet. So we expect a lot more diversion of traffic to that route. And we actually have some extra pavement out there. From 2003, we just never striped it, I guess. So we're going to temporarily stripe an extra westbound lane between the River Bridge and 94 to kind of help with that peak influx of traffic.
Hey, Andy.
Yeah.
Will arena parkway be completely done by that point? I know we're still working on it right now, but.
Yes, yes. I confirmed with county or city, I can't remember.
A little bit of both.
Right? I can't remember offhand, but yes.
It's county.
Yeah.
I always go to John.
Before the end of the year, yeah, right? Good question. Bless you. And I, you know, that's a good question, Mike. I think I might have missed my chance to talk about detour. So when those ramps are closed, the detour, we would detour folks westbound back to 94, and it's a pretty simple turnaround there at the 94 and 70 interchange. Or they could, people can make their own decision. They might go down to South River to 364, or if they really need to go north, maybe they'll travel up to 370. So luckily, we have so many river crossings in the county, so it makes it useful. So that's pretty much in a nutshell. I'm just kind of, this is our, like I said, just a few months ago, we decided, the county district decided, okay, we need to accelerate this thing. So this is our initial public outreach. I want to get everybody informed and on board and just know about these potential impacts or impacts for next year and next two years, really, but mainly in 2020, so.
Andy, is there any concerns for river traffic on the weekends?
Like barge traffic?
No, like boating?
Hmm, no, I don't think so.
No, we've been working with the Corps. They have to maintain an open channel for navigation at all times.
Like a safe zone so nothing falls on a boat or something like that?
Right, yeah.
Is that identified when there's someone on the river, when they're going under the bridge, under construction? Is the safe zone identified?
It would be, it would be on the contractor to have anything marked if there was an overhead hazard or something. But I expect on this, they will probably put up a temporary work platform under the bridge.
Wherever they're working, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So there wouldn't really be a risk of anything falling.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Let me ask Andy a question.
Yes.
If I'm doing my math right, the newer bridge that we're working on now was built 20 years later.
Yeah.
And the other one was torn down, what, less than 10 years ago?
Yeah.
Why did we get 10 more years out of the older bridge than the new one?
I'm not sure I know the answer to that.
I'd say probably we let the older one go another 10 years because we had to tear it pretty much down.
So you let us drive on a substandard bridge?
We would never do that, never do that, no.
Not unsafe.
Yeah.
What you don't know doesn't hurt you.
I just came back from, I just came back from vacation in the Rhineland, and I saw all these Roman bridges that were built 2,000 years ago and are still, they're still up, still working.
Wow, way to set the bar, huh?
Yeah, right? Tough room. So like I said, just kind of want to get out there and just start getting this message out there. It's impossible to overcommunicate this and, you know, feel free to, you know, relay this to constituents. We're going to need people to, the daily commuter should plan on trying to, you know, divert around it, plan ahead, do what works best for them. You know, obviously, the eastbound in the morning is going to be the bigger impact or a larger impact than the PM for eastbound. And then likewise with the PM westbound will be the larger impact, so.
You talked about the renovation of 270. Is that going to be done in segments? Is the planning done for that yet?
Right. I reached out to the director today on that and just kind of like, what can I say? I don't know anything. So they're in the middle of, they just awarded it, so they're in the middle of.
Design.
Working through their, well, working through their contractual stuff. So before the end of the year, they will have signed their contract with that design build team. And then there will be more information, I'm sure, out to the public. But in the meantime, they've got, I can't remember the website right now, but if you go to our website, there's a designated link for the 270 North Design Build. Well, really, all I know is that it'll start in 2020, but their peak impacts will probably be '21, '22, and then probably going into '23. But as far as the details, I.
Right.
I don't even know, I don't even know yet, so.
Okay.
But the public will know here, pretty soon here, before the end of the year, some more details, so.
Very good.
We got, I think we got one more announcement, don't we, Andy? Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to announce that Andy has finally got the swamp going to be drained on the S-turn tomorrow.
Yes, yes. We did some last minute signing of some right-of-way documents, it's just this afternoon. So they're planning to come out there tomorrow and put in a, it's going to end up being a temporary pipe.
Correct, yeah.
So, and then the larger part of the project would start next spring, so. Wanted like crazy to start this fall, but it just didn't, this didn't happen, so.
Well, thank you for your work.
Yeah, thanks for that.
And while you're, that 70 kind of goofed up anyway, you could go ahead and maybe fix that S-curve and railroad underpass.
Well, I would love to. You know I'd love to, so.
Hey, thanks for all the work you do for our citizens.
Thanks, guys.
Rachel does a great job on the emails.
What's that?
She does a great job on the emails.
Yeah, so she just.
We get a couple hundred of those a day.
So she just helped me put together the newsletter, so she'll be sending that, we'll be sending it out tomorrow.
Yeah, and I'll be sending out a press release to stakeholders and the media tomorrow.
Great. So expect more questions, hence why we're here, to just kind of plant the seed, so.
All right.
That's all we got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next thing on our agenda is conditional use permits. We have two tonight, and we start off with bill number 4784.
Bill number 4784 requested by Michael Horbert, sponsored by Nancy Schneider, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 19-04A, for a private club to Alexander Richardson Weber LLC, property owner and applicant.
All right. Will Mr. Myers come forward and do the staff recommendations?
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do. My name is Robert Myers, I'm the Planning and Zoning Division Director. What you have before you are two bills, both related, and both, upon approval, would approve two conditional use permits at what's now being operated as the Yacht Club of St. Louis. The Yacht Club of St. Louis, for more than 40 years, they've operated a marina, including about 275 boat slips. And given flooding in the 2019 flood events, they've decided that they would like to relocate their private club and restaurant to newly created higher ground on the property. So altogether, there's about 82 acres, and they're proposing to relocate in the center of the property. It's about 700 feet from the nearest property line, about 1,000 feet from the nearest residence. Again, these two land uses, the private club and the restaurant have been in operation, but relocation has triggered the need for conditional use permits. In its place, there's about three acres of ground that would be restored back, made scenic, I should say, and asphalt and concrete would be taken up. The old pool will be removed and again relocated to higher ground. If you've been to the site, you'll see there's been a lot of dirt moving. That is being done with permits, and that's at the risk of the property owner in preparation for these applications because of the urgency of their need to relocate, again, due to flooding. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on these applications on October 16th and received public input, and after which, they voted to recommend for each use, both the private club and the restaurant, six in favor, zero in denial, and one abstention. So the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending for approval. County staff likewise recommends approval as conforming to the conditional use permit
Does the applicant here come forward? Can you be sworn in?
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do. Good evening. My name is Cliff Heitman with Beck's Engineering Company on behalf of the Yacht Club of St. Louis. I think Mr. Myers did a good job of outlining the proposal, again, that they've been in operation on that site for 40 years with no issues, complaints, or problems. We have the opportunity now, the flood maps changed a few years ago that allow them to do this reconstruction. We can pull them back away from the river, get them elevated, so their future, new facility would be out of the flood plain. They did start grading work early, they knew that was at their own risk. We did permit that properly with DNR and the Corps of Engineers in the county as well. It just made more sense to get that dirt moved early. You can see what the weather is doing right now, so we wanted to get that dirt moved and in place so they could continue on with construction pending weather here. So we have to answer any questions that the council may have, but again, I think kind of straightforward and Robert hit the high points of the presentation.
All right, very good. At this point, we can open up for public comment. Any individual supporting or opposing this application is invited to share their comments with the council. And we encourage you to limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody that's filled out a speaker card? Please call them forward.
Arnie Dinoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Dinoff, state and county public advocate and also resident of St. Charles County. As I testified at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in October, I have some issues. I'm not opposed to these conditional use permits, both A and B, on applications in 1904, but I have some concerns about flooding on other properties. There was no written communications of approval from the United States Army Corps of Engineers. However, they did put in an existing permit from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. So kind of sounds like we have the cart being put before the horse. Also, I don't see any letters on any impact on our coastal waterways of the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, and I don't see a letter from our partner, the River Point Fire Protection District. This is going to cause an issue in terms of fire rescue, health, safety, and welfare. Conditions, I would like the following conditions to be put on by the council, that the applicant tie down any trash disposal dumpsters, any outside storage units, any fire barbecue pits, any propane tanks, gas pumps, ramps, any other items that can move or cause damage to others or other structures. I think that is very important. I didn't see staff address any of those. I know that we have a strict code enforcement compliance act, but I want to make sure that is a really, with this flash lighting that we had this past spring, it's very well concerned that anything that's not tied down and not mored down to the ground causes damage to structures. And I think that every individual property owner has to be responsible for their own property. So I impede that the county council put these conditions, that they make sure that everything is tied down so we don't hurt anybody or hurting anybody else's adjoining property. Thank you.
No other speakers? No other speakers this time? Then we'll move forward to bill number 4785.
Bill number 4785 requested by Michael Horbert, sponsored by Nancy Schneider, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 19-04B, for a restaurant associated with a private club to Alexander Richardson Weber LLC, property owner and applicant.
Mr. Myers, will you come forward, please?
If you would accept my testimony that I made just a few moments ago, I'd like to just comment that the testimony's the same.
Okay, very good. Does the applicant have anything to add?
Nothing further to add, sir.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none? Then that closes the conditional use permits. And we'll move on to a public hearing for the formation of a St. Charles County Port Authority. Is there any speakers concerning that?
Arnie Dinoff. Mr. Chairman, before you take, speakers could, maybe Mr. Greif, sue, just speak to the procedure.
Yes, could you please come forward, Mr. Greif?
Thank you, county council. This is the second of two public hearings. So we held a public hearing in the county administration building last Tuesday. It was held during working hours. It was a time for residents and businesses. working hours. It was a time for residents and business owners and those that had the interest to come and meet with county staff, ask questions. There was information that was available, and it was well attended, and actually we got some good feedback from that. The second, this is a second opportunity to hear public comments tonight. We'll take the comments from the two meetings, consolidate those, provide a summary, and send those to the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for their review and support, or as another piece of documentation with our application that was submitted a few weeks ago. We expect that the commission will review this information and hopefully act upon the Port Authority either in this meeting in December or January. So this is just the second of two public comment periods.
Very good. Thank you. Any speakers?
Arne Deenoff.
Thank you very much, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenoff, state and county public advocate, and also resident of St. Charles County. First of all, about the information that Mr. Gryshu said, I don't think that there is any information that exists. I made an inquiry to Mrs. Vaught, your chief of staff for the county council office, and her reply via email was that you have zero information and zero facts or supporting documents. If you look at the county council packet that was put on the county website on Friday afternoon, it has a zero hyperlink for any additional information. So I will be at the Missouri Department of Transportation Highways Commission meeting to explain to the commission that we are basically violating the law in Chapter 68 of the Revised State Statutes of Missouri. So Mrs. Vaught told me this afternoon that there are no documents. So I don't understand what Mr. Gryshu is saying, so why can't we get county staff making six figures on the same page? I'm against this county creation of a county port authority. Chapter 68 of the Revised State Statutes of Missouri, this is a ridiculous use and abuse of the law and powers. It provides for a port authority countywide when the river is just on the Mississippi and Missouri rivers. It doesn't affect other places of the county that don't have any bodies of water near them. This is an extra layer in the creation of another bureaucracy. It's a total waste of our tax monies. There are loopholes that create fraud, misuse, misspending of our taxpayer dollars. Case in point is federal corruption cases brought by the U.S. Attorney's Office against people of the St. Louis County Port Authority who are now serving prison terms in federal prison for racketeering and kickbacks. This port authority creates corruption, racketeering, political patronage of Steve Elman appointing six-figure salaries to create an office. Follow the money and look at the Missouri Ethics Commission and see where some of the campaign donations, this is the six out of the seven county council members involving this port authority push. The main sponsor and pusher, Mr. Elam, is power hungry. What kind of Arkansas hooky or okie-doke are you smoking, Mr. Elam? This ordinance is very vague. Your resolution you passed a few years ago is very vague and not being transparent with the public. Chapter 68.020 gives the following to a port authority. It promotes the general welfare, promotes development, which would be a duplication of our economic development staff and our workforce development staff that you pay six-figure salaries currently. It does the creation of an industrial building and industrial park commerce. It establishes a foreign trade zone, which costs us taxpayer money to operate and run. This is hogwash. Chapter 68.025 of the powers of the Revised State Statute state the following: A port authority would be a comprehensive plan, which costs taxpayers' dollars. It would give the authority to levy a sales tax. It would give the port authority the enforcement and levying of a use tax. It would give the port authority the authority to levy real estate taxes. And it would give the port authority the right to levy personal property taxes, all without a vote of us 440 citizens. So basically, it's taxation without representation. It gives the port authority bonding or mortgage authority, gives membership association fees and convention trips throughout the country. It allows the creation of sub-districts of a TDD, known as a Transportation Development District, which Mr. Elman just spoke about. It provides for the creation of a CID, which would be a 1% additional sales tax, known as a Community Improvement District, and it also allows the creation of a Neighborhood Improvement District, known as an NID, which each one of those taxing agencies on top of the port authority would be a 1% sales tax. It allows the port authority to enter into intergovernmental agreements. It allows the port authority to approve construction and indebtedness to our county taxpayers, 440,000 citizens who do not ever have a vote in this process. It allows the port authority to build warehouses at taxpayers' expense, just like you do at the airport, and then you give political foes or political friends breaks for hangar rentals. It allows the port authority to own property. It allows the port authority to use and exercise eminent domain, taking and seizing citizens and family properties and farms from generations of our good citizens here in St. Charles County. It allows the port authority to accept gifts, for the port authority to hire employees, for the port authority to have bylaws. It's an added burdensome of government regulations upon our other county regulations. It allows for seven members divided by parties, both Democrat and Republican, not more than one can be the majority on this commission. It creates a payment and benefits for each one of these seven commissioners. It allows for the creation of an AIM zone in Chapter 68.0445, another layer of bureaucracy of government with taxation powers without a vote of the people. This port authority is a farce. Follow the money. Chapter 68.100 allows the membership in the Mid-America Port Commission, which would be another cost to taxpayers. Chapter 68.200 allows for the creation of another layer of government, known as a Port Improvement District, known as a PID, with taxing authority.
Mr., we ask you to try to limit to three minutes?
I have, I'm trying to publicly testify here, and there is no state law that limits me.
I know, but we were just asking if you would kindly consider it.
I would like to get through my information and publicly testify without being interrupted. I'm going to be about another two and a half minutes, sir. Now, this needs to be submitted to both the Missouri Department of Highways Transportation Commission and also submitted to the Circuit Court. I will fight this move in both Circuit Court and the January meeting of the Missouri Department of Transportation Commission, and ask my fellow citizens and fellow legislatures to boycott and be at this Transportation Commission meeting to make sure that this doesn't pass. Merely in the one line on the public agenda and the public supporting documents of the county council, the public hearing said this is a formation of the St. Charles County Port Authority. There are no supporting documents, zero transparency. In this public hearing, you have failed to, one, to provide a statement of the district; to, two, provide the petition for the establishment of the draft; three, you have not provided to the public the boundaries of the proposed district by statute. And that has to be named by streets and northwest, south, and east. You failed to give a brief description of what the district is going to entail and the mission of the district. The bottom line is there were zero documents, zero facts to comply with the law, and I will contest this legality in Circuit Court. How reckless and sloppy of our county government to create another layer of a district taxing government to create six-figure political patronage positions for political donors, political friends, and special interests of county executive Steve Elman. We need to squash and stop the abuse of this government. One, no new taxes without a vote of, without a vote by the 440,000 residents, which is known as taxation without representation. Two, bad use of stealing others' land through the controversial use of eminent domain that Steve Elman, the county executive, has opposed when he was in the state legislature and when he was acting as county executive. Three, this allows five to seven commissioners to vote to use the power of eminent domain without a vote of citizens. Four, there is no election of the commissioners. There are only political appointees of the county executive, which is for political favors, and I oppose that. This is a pay-to-play political appointments. And lastly, I'm opposed to this district because it allows no voting of us citizens on our future and what our county is going to look like. This is a hogwash. Look at the debacle over in St. Louis County in the racketeering, the corruption, the fraud of the use of the St. Louis County Port Authority. I implore you to vote no, and if you don't vote no, and you vote yes, and it moves on to the commission, I will be there, and I will seek every other elected official of our county to be there to oppose this, and if it passes the commission, I will file a lawsuit in county circuit court challenging the legality of this debacle of a port authority. It's ridiculous. It's a waste of our taxpayer money. It will not serve anything that our current county staff sitting behind me can't do in terms of economic development, promoting our county and bringing in new sales tax and sales revenue to our county. You're creating government without a vote of the people. You talk about passing another issue for CIDs, or I'm sorry, community improvement districts? Why don't you put this on the ballot and let us, the citizens, have a vote, either yes or no, instead of controlling it by seven greedy politicians? Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
No.
Okay.
Can I, just for the record, say I have never smoked hooey?
Oh, okay.
I just want that on the record, just so we know. And I don't think we have 440,000 citizens in St. Charles County, but we'll find out next year exactly how many we have.
All right, with that, we'll move on to public comments. This is a time when anybody can come before the county council and speak on any topic. Once a topic has been arrived at, we ask that, we have three speakers pros, three speakers con, and we do emphatically ask that you only use three minutes or less. Are there any speakers?
Arne Deenoff.
Surprise, surprise.
Thank you very much, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenoff, state and county public advocate and citizen of St. Charles County. Mr. Chairman, I take affront to your comments, and I take affront to your comments two meetings ago, in which you said some disparaging, libelous, and slanderous remarks. You know, I come here for a point, just like you do. I have a heart of gold and a heart of love for this county, and I want to see the best for my county, not the worst and negativity that you purport. So first of all, I'd like to start out by saying, Ryan Graham, thank you for a great job yesterday. You did an outstanding job of the opening of Veterans Tribute Memorial Park and the great memorial for our county soldiers who served in the various wars. He's an outstanding Parks and Recreation Director, and I've watched him over the last year in his new appointment, and you made a great selection. He has an open door to everyone, and I saw him speak to a resident who had some comments and problems because she lives on the border of the park, and he had an open-door policy and wanted to listen. He took the time out on that ceremonial day to hear her concerns, and I think that's very important. I wish some of you, elected officials, including county executive, would have an open-door policy and listen to us citizens who really care deeply about the future of St. Charles County. Now, you have on the potential hiring, and you met in closed session before this meeting, and you met with Demetrius, and I, excuse me if I mispronounce your name, Cyancy Chapman. I have many questions as a resident. Is this the best fit for our new director of public health and the environment? Our medical health and care, landfills, food inspections, and the environment are very important to us St. Charles Countyans. Medicine on an Indian reservation in the state of New Mexico is very vastly different, and it's not, and it's really what's good and what's effective for residents in St. Charles County. So I have some real concerns about medicine being portrayed or being exercised in New Mexico here in Missouri, and why we can't get a homegrown, somebody who is inside our public health department, to be the new director. There was no public input or participation, once again, by the administration, and I think that that's really sad. You know, your lack of allowing citizens to testify at the pre-meeting, the workshop is ridiculous, showing bad government. It sends the message to us citizens to sit down and shut up, and you don't care what we have to say. Your testimony, facts, and value do not matter, according to Mr. White's, according to how he exemplifies himself. Yet you get $937.50 attendance fee at every county council meeting. You get $5,000 in pension contributions. You get perks on a monthly basis, and you get $1,000 or more per month for medical health coverage for you and your family without any dependent co-pays or deductibles. And still, there's no public apology from Mr. Brazel, lying to public falsely accusations of libel, slander, and mistruths.
Mr. Deenoff, your time is up.
We're sorry, but much as we like to listen to you, your time is up. I apologize. You don't like to listen to me.
Oh, I do. You just.
You really don't care what I say.
Yes, I do. I really do.
It's all about you.
Your time is expired. I enjoy you. I enjoy you every meeting.
And I'll be at the next meeting. But just remember, when I come up here, I care, and I have a heart of gold.
I do, too.
I care about this county, just like all seven of you do and all of you do.
We do.
So don't ever discredit that.
Oh, I don't. I just enjoy you so much.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. I get, just makes me laugh inside all over.
You can laugh all you want.
No, I just, you really do. No, I'm not. I'm serious. You're just a joy. You're a joy. We're glad to have you. Are there any other speakers?
No other speakers.
Okay. Now, I lost my place. Oh, we're going to go to the county executive for any public, any, anything to say, Mr. Executive?
No, no, Mr. Chairman, you've said it all.
Okay. All right.
Well. Do you have more to add?
Yeah, so, no.
Why don't I let you tell them about Demetrius?
So, on the agenda tonight, as you know, oh, sorry, I apologize, is Demetrius, who I know you all had a chance to read the information that was sent to you by the county executive when he nominated him. However, I really don't want to just pass over this because I think we have an extraordinary candidate here. I mean, this gentleman started out his career in direct nursing, worked with burn patients, extraordinary compassion when we met him. He's a, he's a true public servant. Moved into public health from there, worked in lead poisoning, gained all the appropriate degrees, you can see that, and then dedicated himself to the Uniform Public Health Service, and went out to take on several things with the Navajo Nation, ended up working for the state of New Mexico in licensure, gained further understanding, not only of the public health world through that, but also of budgeting and management of an agency, pardon me, and has most recently been heading up Centers for Medicare and Medicaid program to look at the quality of care in 24 hospitals across seven states, and in fact, has just completed a round of that, when he saw that this was open and he had to make a decision about whether to maintain the career path that he was on or to serve the local community. And John and Jennifer and I spent significant time with him. He spent time inside the department, talking to people, amazing, insightful questions, had done a lot of study of what we were about, and his dedication and compassion is to come here and serve his local community. He is a Missouri native. He was born in Jefferson County and was here until he went into the Uniform Public Health Service. So he knows the nature of the St. Louis area. He knows the nature of St. Charles. He chose Wentzville to live in, and that's where he settled his family. And so we're just really excited to have him.
Very good. Thank you for that. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to accept?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove an item from consent agenda for discussion. Is it possible that we could talk about the Parks and Recreation bid with Ryan for just a brief moment?
Is there, are you making that as a motion?
Yes, second.
Is it a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, motion carries.
Anything else you want both to?
You want us to call up?
No, that's it. I'm good with that, just this. No, come on. Hey, I spent a good part of the summer at national parks and federal properties, and saw all kinds of places where signs up at those facilities that said, "Nonpotable water, do not drink", okay? But it sounds like DNR is trying to make you not have that in our bathrooms. Is that correct, from what I'm reading?
Yes. From, there was a ruling that was made, or the EPA basically had made a recommendation that nonpotable water, that human consumption doesn't include hand washing. So.
So the federal agency, EPA, did it, but they're not doing it themselves on their own national parks?
The, I believe it was a state-by-state decision.
Okay. Okay.
And I think the state of Missouri had, I guess, went and fought, or not fought it, but I guess was, you know, evaluating it, and eventually, we got a letter that just said that they had made the determination that rainwater and nonpotable water cannot be used for hand washing because it was then a human consumption. There was a chance that despite the signs, you could wash your hands and then...
Drink it.
Put them in your mouth, and, yeah, so...
Yeah, okay. How do you plan, and I know, how do you plan keeping these lines from not freezing in the wintertime? I mean, I saw it, it's 160 grand for almost 20, so it's about eight grand a toilet, and for running water lines or wells, that's probably reasonable. But these things don't have heaters in them, do they?
The lower levels do.
They do. So you won't have a freeze issue.
We shouldn't, no.
That's the only question.
We contacted the manufacturer and, and, you know, said, hey, you know, because he makes these things, he's actually putting some right now out in, I believe, Arizona right now. And we said, hey, you know, we, we've got this letter, can we hook them up to a water source, whether it be a well or public water source? And he said, yeah, it should be fine. There's a heater in there, so it prevents freezing. We winterize most of our restrooms, but, yeah, so it shouldn't have an issue.
Okay, that's all I have, and I'll let Steve put this on his list of unfunded federal mandates that when he talks to Roy Blot next time.
This is a state, this is a state mandate, which is prohibited by the Hancock Amendment.
Why are we doing it if we're, if it's, it is, it is against, can they do that? Can they actually, what if we didn't do it? I mean, what are they going to do?
We looked into that.
So far, Mr. Cronin's held this up for three minutes. I held it up for three days, asking some of these same questions, and bottom line is, it's not worth fighting. Unless you want to just fight it on the principle of the thing.
No. That's all I got.
Okay.
One thing I got, what are those boats who are putting out on the different, are you waiting till spring? Are you putting those out now, or what?
The i paddle ports?
Yeah.
We just got our fifth one delivered today. We're kind of missing the season when it comes to kayaks and paddle boards. They can be put out on spot now, but they're probably going to be winterized until spring, unfortunately. But, yeah, they're, they're, they're really neat. I can't wait for them to come out. I joked with the guy who invented, invented them. He came down here, and I met with him today, and I said, "We're going to have so much staff time, people just looking at this, trying to figure out how it works," because it really is a neat system. I'm really excited to bring it to our parks, so...
I have a question for you while we get to it. Do we have any docks or anything on Quiver River that belong to the county parks?
Flatwoods. So, yeah, we acquired a small portion of land that was part of, I believe, a bridge construction project that I believe...
Me and Jared are.
I think, I believe Lincoln County actually had it for one period of time, and they transferred it over to the Parks Department. We had closed it down for many years. We had some requests to try to allow recreation, kayaking, canoeing on the river there, so we developed that small area, put in a parking lot, put in a dock, and soon to be having a kayak launch off that dock. So, yeah, we're excited to get people out on the Quiver.
The only reason I ask, because I had a constituent who's very familiar with the current river and didn't notice that there was any way to detach the dock, or...
It's supposed to rise up and down with, with the flooding, so it's designed to rise up to pretty historic levels of flooding, so it's got an arm that basically goes up and down. So, we're hoping it'll ride out any flood.
Okay. And I guess my only other concern is when, when the river comes up...
Yeah.
And there's a lot of debris that comes down the current, that it doesn't take out that dock without...
Right.
Some kind of maintenance to maintain.
It's pretty stout in there. There's a support arm, and it's cabled, and so, there's always that chance.
You're going to guarantee that that debris won't take that thing out?
There's no guarantee, but...
I think Dave's saying it wouldn't be easier just to pull it out if it's going to flood.
Yeah, we'll secure it, but...
While we're on that subject, I did get a complaint already about that park, and I'll tell you about it because you might be able to address it. There's a landowner immediately upstream from there, and his name is, he's a veterinarian in O'Fallon. His name is Dr. John Schulte, and he's got a big piece of ground there, and the road to his house is on Google Map, okay? But it's a private road. And he said, "People are already trying to drive up down his driveway thinking they could launch upstream of our county park," okay?
Oh, really?
And float down.
Okay.
And he says he's getting dozens of cars a day because of this, apparently words getting out on this park to the kayak community.
Okay.
So if there's a way you can somehow or other on a park site, or maybe we can contact Google Map and say, "Please take that off or mark it as a private road," he would greatly appreciate that.
Okay, I'll look into it. We've met out there with him before, so we'll look into it.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Is there a way to put your motion back under the agenda?
Yes, yes, but make a motion to put the parks back on the consent agenda.
Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No oppose? Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No oppose? Consent agenda has been passed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I would like. I would like you to invite, go ahead.
Demetrius, would you like to come up and say a few words? We appreciate you being here. Congratulations on joining the county.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, thank you very much. I don't really know what you want me to say, but I'm really happy to be here. This is my home now, and I'm really looking forward to serving my community.
Thank you for being here.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you.
Very good.
And you don't have to sit in there anymore at these meetings.
Well, that's good. And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I cannot conclude the appointment of the new director without thanking Sarah Evers for the work she's done as the acting. I don't think it's been easy. I think she'll tell you that if she's still here. Oh, there she is. She's dealt with blue-green algae threats and dogs and everything else under the sun, including public health crises where they had to go investigate. So she's done an excellent job for us as acting, and I want to express my thanks for that.
Very good. Next on our agenda is bills for final passage, and we'll begin with bill number 4781.
Bill number 4781, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended St. Charles County Regional Drug Task Force Agreement for the county's multi-jurisdictional drug task force.
Are there any questions or comments on bill number 4781? Seeing none, read the title and call a roll, please.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended St. Charles County Regional Drug Task Force Agreement for the county's multi-jurisdictional drug task force. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Bill number 4781 has passed, and we'll move on to bill 4782.
Bill number 4782, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a professional service agreement between St. Charles County, Missouri, and the United States Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Missouri in conjunction with the Missouri Highway Patrol as fiscal agent and Michael K. Fagan as an independent contractor.
Are there any questions or comments on 4782? Seeing none, read the title and call a roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a professional service agreement between St. Charles County, Missouri, and the United States Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Missouri in conjunction with the Missouri Highway Patrol as fiscal agent and Michael K. Fagan as an independent contractor. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Bill 4782 has passed. We'll move on to bill 4783.
Bill number 4783, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement to allow certain law enforcement agencies to participate and utilize the St. Charles County Police Department's Substance Tobacco Alcohol Resistance Training, S.T.A.R.T., program.
Any questions or comments on bill 4783? Seeing none, read the title and call a roll, please.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement to allow certain law enforcement agencies to participate and utilize the St. Charles County Police Department Substance Tobacco Alcohol Resistance Training, S.T.A.R.T., program. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill 47, 4783 has passed, and that concludes bills for final passage, and we move on to bills for introduction, beginning with 4786.
Bill number 4786, requested by Scott Drachnik, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive, or is designated, to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Department of Social Services, Family Support Division Department, and the St. Charles County Department of Workforce and Business Development related to the Skill Up and Jobs League services contract.
Are there any questions or comments on bill 4786? Seeing none, move to bill 4787.
Bill number 4787, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a CMAQ program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Gateway Greenlight Program, federal project CMAQ 5414637.
Are there any questions or comments on bill number 4787? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4788.
Bill number 4788, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance approving a supplemental amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Gateway Greenlight Program, Phase Six, federal project CMAQ 5414634.
Are there any questions or comments on bill 4788? Seeing none, move on to bill 4789.
Bill number 4789, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Charles for use of St. Charles County transportation sales tax funds for road improvements needed to support the FedEx Freight Expansion Center project.
Are there any questions or comments on 4789? Seeing none? That concludes bills for final, for introduction, and we move on to table bills. Are there any bills to come off the table? Seeing none? That concludes all bills for this evening. We move on to announcements and miscellaneous. Are there any announcements or miscellaneous?
So first of all, I'd like to echo the praises for our Parks Department for the opening of our veterans' area, Veterans Tribute Park. It was really well done. I appreciate the county executive making an alternate call and letting us do that on Sunday, which was a Chamber of Commerce Day. I mean, it was gorgeous out there. Councilman Hammond came out and was part of the ceremony, and everybody from the PR that went out about that, Mary's Department, and letting everybody know that we moved the date up, and our municipal band league that came out and, and they played, they got everybody together at a moment's notice to move. We had Kurt Barr, who's our director of elections, who's an Air Force veteran, Mayor Borgmeyer, and Mayor Pagano came out and read the names of those who have been killed in action from the county. So it was just a great ceremony and a great job, again, from everybody who put that together. You deserve major kudos, especially from, we had everything set for a Monday, and God had different plans for Monday, so we moved it to Sunday, and it, it worked really, really well. So, kudos to everybody.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I would just echo that and thank Mary and Ryan for a program that was well-planned and executed just perfectly, and had a lot of comments. Everybody was very professional. Chief, your, your unit there that presented the colors did an excellent job. And Mike, you did a great job emceeing it, had your, just the right amount of humor for such an occasion.
There was very little humor, so that was good.
And, of course, the greatest thank you needs to go to our, our weather lady here, who came to me on Thursday?
Yeah.
On Thursday, and she had been, she had been watching the weather reports already for about a week, and she said, "Hey, this is going to be a disaster if we do it on, on Monday," and everybody knows it would have been.
It would have been.
So instead, we did it the day before, and that, I can't thank you enough, Joanne. That was such a, that was such a great assist.
The smallest contribution.
I think we're going to keep you around for another year.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I actually have to add, if I may, that the biggest thank you actually goes to the county executive on this one, because two years ago, he stuck us in cars and drove us all over the area, looking at memorials and asking us what was wrong with these.